At least someone did. No, at least someone did.
Good morning, Statesboro. We're gonna call up one of the city council meetings for February fifth, twenty nineteen. It is nine a.m. We have our invitation and pledge of allegiance by council in Seattle, Georgia.
As a prior, the creator of the universe, the deity who vows to come to this place to be called Statesboro Chamber of Council, we invite you here, knowing that you already here. Let us sit down and raise together the development of the group, citizens of Statesboro, our staff, guests. Together, let us all God should say, amen.
Blessed living through the life of the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move down to agenda item three, recognition of public presentations. Section A, the recognition of state office for their appropriate emergency affairs for well number nine.
Give you a quick update.
I'm gonna do a little closer, you just have a little more.
Okay, better. All right, I want to give you a quick update. We've had a problem with our well number nine, which is located in industrial park. We actually have two located near the Gateway Industrial Park. Well number nine started, we saw a reduction in our pumping reports, wasn't pumping as much water as it should. It started gradually increasing and we had some vibrations coming from it, so we shut it down, figured out service, called in a couple companies to give us some advice on what they thought was wrong. And it wasn't a good pump station in the bottom of the well, you know, need to pull the pump out, replace the pump, have to replace the shaft, fairly expensive, expensive process. We didn't get to go ahead and Danny Lively, our war service superintendent, called and got quotes from different vendors, two vendors, so we came to this equipment, brought that information, we can be approved to go ahead and do the emergency purchase. We already ordered the equipment to replace, we said, we did that last week, so we're hoping the equipment will begin this week and maybe next week they can start pulling the pump and making the repairs. We're okay, as long as there's not a major fire in or something in that area where we need those fire flows. We satisfy all the daily needs of the area in the town, the total reductions in pressure or flood. It would only be a problem in the minimum fire, but it was, that did constitute an emergency we need to get fixed as soon as possible. I think that included in your, in your package, we did get, we did get two quotes on replacing that equipment and road drilling company was thirty-six thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. I just wanted to let y'all know what was going on and if we're taken care of and hopefully in a couple weeks we'll have repairs and back online.
Thank you, Steve. Is there any comments to council, questions by council? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move down to three B, this is the presentation of the Arbor Day proclamation. Excepting the Arbor Day proclamation, we'll, we'll be Statesboro Tree Board, the Tree Board will come forward. And Mr. Robert Seaman, we have you down. Now I'd like to read the proclamation. The proclamation reads as follows. My proclamation by the mayor and city council of Statesboro, Georgia, Arbor Day. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was the first, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, our fires and countless other wood products. Whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of businesses, business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I Jonathan McCall, mayor of the city of Statesboro, do hereby proclaim, February fifteenth, twenty nineteen, as Arbor Day. In the city of Statesboro, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. This, I date this fifth of February in the year twenty nineteen.
Okay. Wes and Farmer are the full chairmen.
Correct. Okay, thank you, mayor, thank you, council. Thank you members of the Tree Board and the Beautification Commission for your hard work this year. We're here to celebrate Arbor Day, usually I give you the same speech about the history of Arbor Day, we're gonna do things a little bit different today. We're gonna have city council tree jeopardy. The winner gets a product of the tree. And if no council member gets, is the winner, city attorney is gonna get the, get the tree. So eat the default, okay. Wes is gonna call you up after, after the questions read and you give me, after the answers read, you're gonna give me the answer in the form of a question. For example, what is a native tree? Okay, every answer is a tree. When I finish reading the question, raise your hand.
Wes, whoa, do not be like, you know what I did, we follow a friend or something?
It's all we need, that's all we need. Okay, first question. This tree is not dead and is the state tree of Georgia.
What is, what is live oak? Our council meeting?
All right. Good job. This tree, native of Georgia, creates arguments over how to pronounce its name and its nuts could be found in pies on Thanksgiving.
What is it?
Tables.
Or pecan. Oh, I gotta be back in the house.
I like that.
You gotta wait till the questions finish or the answers finish.
I just wanted to make sure, no, I mispronounced that.
All right, go ahead.
Peacon.
Correct.
A true song.
Okay, this, this flowering canine tree, native of Georgia, can be found up and down Savannah Avenue in Statesboro. Correct.
There you go.
Okay, four, two more. George Washington would not tell a lie about this tree, which can be found in the medians of Park Avenue.
What's your cherry tree?
We got a tie here, this will be a tiebreaker, number five is the last one. This entire goes to the city attorney. This tree is not a nightmare and it can be found lining East Main Street. What is an elm tree? Correct.
There you go, good job, good job.
Okay.
I know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colin.
Thank you for playing city council jeopardy and thank you for supporting our tree board and thank you for supporting Arbor Day. Like to give you a few benefits of our trees, it cleans the air and water, beautifies our city, provides home for wildlife, conserves energy and provides products like paper and lumber. We'd like to invite all of you to our Arbor Day celebration, which we held March first at Statesboro Dog Park and in conjunction with Statesboro D S D A's first Friday, so better note your calendars.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so we'll move down to agenda item B two, which is recognition of the city's participation in the Tree City USA program. Doug Cheserow, chief, chief ranger of the Georgia Forestry Commission, will discuss the Tree City USA program and present to the mayor and council with the Tree City USA flag.
Mayor McKidd, we also introduce our new community forester, Alex Ballard.
Yes, absolutely.
Alex is coming to us, Miss Sut.
Yeah, started in November and I'm the community forester for South Ridge in Georgia. And if you have any questions on the outreach for the forest program.
Well, good things come out of Mississippi, that's where my life is from. Absolutely, what part of Mississippi are you from?
From Grenada.
Grenada? Okay, because she's from Jackson, Mississippi.
I'm right between Jackson and Memphis.
Yeah, that's, there you go, there you go, I don't go that far. I start from Jackson, right, maybe go to Lexington a little bit. Absolutely, go ahead.
Good morning, I'm Doug Sacherow, I'm the chief ranger of the Little County. Present Tree City USA flag, just came in yesterday, twenty-six years. Kinda, kinda a milestone for me, because I remember the first Tree City USA, kind of shaped by the Georgia Forest Commission, first city of Statesboro. This is Michael Enson, he's the management forester of Little County in the city of Statesboro.
This is front, Tree City USA, twenty-six years.
Doug, y'all will step out to the center, please, we'll get the mayor out there.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Y'all do the work by earning it every year.
Don't be going to the banquet.
Mr. Mayor, if I could real quick, with recognizing the Tree Board and Beautification Commission here, in their efforts, the city of Statesboro has seen over two thousand trees planted within the city of Statesboro this past year, either by projects they have supported or worked on or by the city green space ordinance having a tree can be restored for developing new properties and play a role and a lot more. Arbor Day this year, February fifteenth, for the state of Georgia, Georgia Southern, will be holding a Arbor Day program on their campus at that time. Arbor Day Paw Walk event, we're partnering with D S D A for the downtown, at the downtown Dog Park, for our annual Arbor Day program, where we will be installing the last of thirty trees at that Dog Park. There'll also be a doggy costume contest at that location. And then we have our big event for spring in the Statesboro, April thirteenth, downtown on East Main. And last year at that event, we gave away over two hundred trees. Thank y'all.
Thank you, dear.
Mr. Mayor, you know, I, I just wanna say, I've been coming into the center for twelve years and there's been no group that has been consistently more active, more, that has worked and that has clearly done amazing things over the last, since I've been coming for twelve years. And, and much of that is Mr. Clay's leadership and he's been, and working with Robert Seaman, the two of them together, they've, they've planned, I mean, some of these things that they're doing now, they've planned five, ten years ago. So I just wanna say thank you for everybody who does work on that commission. Haven't seen a more active group in my time, so thank you for your work.
We'll move down to agenda item B C, which is recognition of the city of Statesboro Advanced Patrol Officers, Kyle Riley and Nick Davis, who will see here in the community service award. Chief Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I'd like to have advanced patrol officers Riley and Davis join me at that podium, please. Ordinarily, we keep our awards in-house, more or less, but these two gentlemen have really stepped out in the community and done some above and beyond work, I just want to thank them a little bit of public recognition for their efforts out in the community. So, the advanced patrol officer Nick Davis, getting the community service award, which is a certificate as well as a uniform, really. He's been with the Civil Air Patrol for more than seven years, he's currently their deputy commander. And that means that he's working at any given time with, you know, thirty or more of our local youth, mentoring them and helping them to, to kind of introduce them to the military system and help them to advance in their skills of leadership and, and public service. So I just wanted to recognize Nick for that, he's doing a great job there. And advanced patrol officer Kyle Riley, as you know, he's one of our canine officers, he runs his canine partners, V O. Kyle helped form a five oh one C, free nonprofit group called the Georgia Police Canine Foundation, which then you have been involved, that's a pretty glorious process to even get that recognized and did a great fundraising work and their stated mission is to help retired canines, right? So what we tend to do is, is we use these dogs as partners, we treat them, you know, as police officers and then we retire them and sort of forget about them. And, and so Kyle's worked through this foundation, which he's also served as, as the inaugural president of, is to raise funds to, to help those dogs, like they'll build and, and, you know, into the, the last phase of their life. And so, doing great work. The other thing that Kyle has done, we want to recognize, is that, that he went to the auto parts stores around town, this is the second year he's done that, and, and got coupons from them to hand out so officers can take those out and when they pull somebody over for a, an equipment violation, taillight out, headlight out, something like that, in addition, give them a warning or a citation, they can give them a coupon from one of these organizations to go and, and get a reduction on getting the problem fixed, which is what we really want to accomplish event, in the first place. So I would like to step out, bug beyond, and I just want to thank all these gentlemen first for their hard work.
Statesboro, I do wanna say something about both of these, these officers that we have, to kind of speak to their integrity. Before they even receive the awards that they're receiving today, they're no variety for the work that they do and their respect, they're furious they already breached us. And I had the opportunity to participate in a program that the Civil Air Patrol had, where they had, and I could get the ladies position, the canine, what was her position? When she, she came down a couple of months back, I think she was like higher up in the Civil Air Patrol.
Oh, the colonel.
Yes, yes, absolutely. She came down to recognize the work that was being done in this community, so that was a very big deal. And then the Canine Foundation, their work proceeds themselves, they were one of the recipients of the downtown Get Downs fundraiser proceeds. And the community rallied around them to really show their support. So the work that these young, that these men are doing within our community speaks for itself and we're very fortunate to have officers like that as a part of our team. Thank you guys for all the work that you do. Miss Sut, we're gonna move down to agenda item four, are there any, is there anything inside for further comments? We'll move on to agenda item five, which is consideration of a motion to approve the Senate General, approval of minutes for the January fifteenth council meeting. And then B is the Statesboro Police Department request to surplus twelve vehicles in the Statesboro PD fleet. Is there a motion to approve? So moved. Jacket. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to show that the agenda item is, as, five is passed. All right, agenda item six, which is consideration of a motion to approve the city of Statesboro participation in the anti-bullying day set for July twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Mr. Jeff Klett to kind of come up and discuss the anti-bullying day. I know he came before us and gave us a quick briefing of what it was about and we wanted to get it on the agenda as soon as possible so that the good people of Statesboro can throw softballs and dump the mayor to the junking booth. I think that's what we agreed to, right?
We've gotten plenty of phone calls in participation of that event. I also have a Corvette sitting up on the corner that needs some new parts and if the chief could help me out with some coupons.
Oh, okay.
Anti-bullying day speaks everything else. You go from school to school and there's a parent, parents. Just the other day, there was a lockdown at Statesboro High School because of this activity. Kids, they're not born being bullies, they learn from their environment. And this is a national epidemic. You know, the old days, you'd say to some kid, I'll meet you at three o'clock, we'll be in the schoolyard and we'll take this up. Today, violence has gone sky high. And you can be bullied through social media, at the dinner table, at one o'clock in the morning. And what the goal is, is to show that adults and children, we're all on the same page. We want the end and conclusion to this kind of activity. We'd love the police department to come out and meet the kids and sit, and show them that we're all in this together. And that is the purpose of starting the first anti-bullying day and we're proud to say we're gonna do it again.
Thank you. All right, is there, is there any comment or questions by council? All right, is there a consideration of a motion to approve the anti-bullying day? So moved. What is that, second? Second. All those in favor? Aye, all right, thank you. Thank you, council, thank you, man. All right. Let us show that agenda item six is passed. Agenda item seven is a consideration of a motion to approve a water contract to A.D. Williams Construction in the amount of one hundred twenty-nine thousand one hundred sixty-four dollars for the Bullock Street Detention Facility project funding is provided by stormwater revenues. Jason, if you'll give us some insight on that.
Thank you, mayor, council. This project is, this project is to construct a stormwater detention facility in Passive Park, that'll be adjacent to the main drainage way, so located between Bullock Street and West Crady Street along Institute Lane. Excuse me. So work includes grading of approximately one point three acres and installation of drainage pipe, curtain gutters, sidewalk and some additional infrastructure. So this passive, passive detention facility will be very similar to what you see on Parker Street near West Jones Avenue, Mizzen Park. So we solicited sealed bids, first time we put bids out, we did not, we only received one bid, so we're not able to open those bids. We put the project back out and only received two bids the second time. And A.D. Williams was the low bidder in the amount of one hundred ninety-nine thousand one hundred sixty-four dollars.
Is there any question or comments by council?
I'd like to comment the fact that, the fact you mentioned it'll be similar to Mizzen Park, you know, Mizzen Park's a little Jonesville. And it turns out they did things on the park and up in the reservoir. So I know the people, the citizens, just still we're looking forward to that because it's been something needed.
All right. Is there a motion to approve? So moved. Jacket. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's show that the agenda item seven is passed. We'll move down to agenda item number eight, which is consideration of a motion to approve Resolution twenty nineteen dash oh six, or Resolution forbidding discriminatory practices. How passes this resolution is requiring an application for the twenty nineteen community development block. Frank, if you'll give us some insight on that.
Yes, sir, thank you. And if you remember from the last, the city council meeting, we approved a resolution to apply for a C D B G application. They have adopted some new rules and regulations, this cycle, this is one of them. You'll see, there's a list of one through five there, some items we'll have to make sure we do during that process that we are awarded, we'll just ask that you adopt this resolution for the C D B G.
All right. Any questions by council?
Frank, for the project, is this where? This is for the stormwater, water sewers, really an extension of the old C D B G, right? That same area there, doesn't have enough money.
Oh, that's like a phase two, right? Thank you, that would have been fun, so I want to bring this up, did I have brought you?
All right, thank you, Frank. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, excuse me, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Did I say?
Circle.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll move down to agenda item nine, on the other business. The work session, we decided not to move forward with that work session, that's what we, that's what the decision was on that. So we move down to agenda item ten, which is the city manager's comments.
We're, before you go to that, I have a comment on one line.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a lot of tires in addition to, throughout the city. And while it suggests.
Repeat what you just said, I think, tires, like. Okay.
Tires.
Yeah.
And I'd like to suggest that the city would consider to pick up maybe twice a year. We have the tires through our social media and we're well-sighted, citizens know that we're gonna pick up our tires at least twice a year. That's something to consider, we're not getting a better fall.
And I wonder, Jason, I've had to deal with a couple of roll-off containers here over the past few months and people will just drive by and throw tires in there, so is that an issue that you guys are dealing with through the, through solid waste?
It is, that's one of the pre-conditions that, you know, typically we pick up, we discourage, however, it is becoming a nuisance. I've talked with staff recently about making sure we clean this up. And actually had planned as part of our, for American Clean Up Spring in Statesboro event, doing a sweep and cleaning up some tires, but we can definitely look at trying to expedite that.
Do we know where these tires are coming from? Because I know when you and I was discussing a particular project, it was actually a tire that was stuck in a drainage, matter of fact, it was in your district, a tire that was stuck in a drainage and that drainage was actually having some, some flooding issues, because it wasn't properly. So do we know where these tires are coming from or they just miraculously appear?
That's right, we talked about that owners of these tires, they either own their property or adjacent to their property and they, they always tell us typically that, you know, where they came from, they just showed up overnight.
I'm wondering, I know some of the used tire places in town don't take your old tire. So they do is a change, they put on new tires and then they throw your old tires in their trunk.
Yeah.
And so I'm wondering if, I mean, maybe we need to look into requiring those guys for those to be collected, disposed of properly as opposed to just throwing in somebody's trunk, which ends up getting thrown in our drains, dishes and in their trash.
Tires are heavily regulated by the state and buying new tires, I think the state requires you can impose fees on, on the old tires for proper disposal.
Yeah, I'm preferring to like the used tire places in town, there's a bunch of little one-man operations and I'm wondering if that's what it is, because they don't take your old tires.
We'll definitely look at that, I was not aware of that. I believe some of the county recycling centers, and that's for all county residents here, and several of those centers will take used tires, not from companies or businesses, but they'll take them from
Individuals.
Individual residents of Little County. So that's, that's an option for people, to my knowledge, but we'll definitely look. So, that's, that's an option for people, to my knowledge, but we'll definitely look at using used tire, I'm obviously familiar with that. We'll try to have something back to you in March, to let you know, we'll find out, give a little bit of insight.
Jason, do you know any companies who have accepted used tires from individuals, can you identify those companies at this time?
So, I'm not familiar with, with businesses that, that deal with used tires, how they deal with that. But most businesses that we work with that tires, that have tires, sell tires, they usually have more proper disposal methods. An option is to take it to the landfill, they're going to charge you out there, the standard tip is right for that. But a lot of people have, a lot of businesses have contracts with people that can pick the tires up and process them and recycle them.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. City manager comments?
Oh, I might say something, I remember that too.
Okay, go ahead.
Police Department, Impact Team, keep it up. That's good front-page news, I like to see that, like to see it. Week, highs a week, three times. Also, I'd like to see this car with a hundred and forty-six million three hundred and sixty-three thousand miles on it. I hope that's a typo. No, I know, I hope it's not a typo, because he didn't put a world record. Forty-six million miles. Also, the fire department had their gala this weekend, chief.
We had our what?
Or was it this weekend, when is it?
A gala.
It's, it's.
Our awards banquet?
Yeah, award banquet.
No, that's the twenty-third.
That's the twenty-third, I'm sorry, I thought it was.
You're a month ahead.
I went behind, that's why. I apologize, but fire department, don't get to here for y'all, and that's good.
Take care, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, good, good. Anything else for the, for counsel?
Nope.
All right. No, ready.
We've been talking about T-SLOSS for a long time, and Jason will make introduction, that we have someone who will help us for the next five years, through all those projects and everything. Yes, unfortunately, particularly right now, the Department of Insurance Staff, with the T-SLOSS program, was approved the position of T-SLOSS Capital Projects Manager. So, I'm happy to announce that we've been able to hire a local person for that position. We were able to hire Mr. William Cole, Williams here.
That's Dan Cole, are you doing?
Yeah, he's a, he's a Statesboro resident, Statesboro native, so very familiar with the local development community, knows all the engineers and contractors in the areas. Retired from Georgia Southern recently, thirty years in Georgia Southern as a project manager, so we're pleased to have him on board.
All right, good, welcome aboard, William. Thank you.
And he has all of your language, sure, he'll translate in the next five.
Yeah, that's my, hey, he knows, that's do it.
I got a couple of them.
Go ahead.
Tim, you're going to give us an update from your meeting last night?
Yes, sir. So, just wanted to make everyone aware that we held our first public information meeting last night at Fire Station Number Two. This was in regards to the ISO ratings that are affecting the district. This really hasn't been an issue for our citizens inside the city, and it's because of our municipal water system. And I'll certainly give them kudos, because they do an excellent job maintaining that system, and that is one thing that we do not want for, you know, on the fire scene inside the city is water. We, they do a great job keeping the systems up. But that is not the case in the fire district, and commissioners, some of you guys, me, absolutely have received numerous phone calls with frustrations of citizens out there with their insurance. One example that was given last night is when homeowners' insurance went up five thousand dollars, you know, evidently this was a pretty hard one, but it went from that class to read you that, that class A.D., and that's a pretty significant drop. So, it was a, it was a, a good meeting, Councilman Young was there, and I appreciate him attending. Jason was also out there, and a couple of officials from the county, we had about twenty-five folks. It was productive, I think they appreciated the information and what we're trying to do. Obviously, there's some frustrations, but overall, I think we accomplished what we intended to with these meetings, which was to be transparent with what the issues are, and then what we are doing to address them, and then update them with the information as we get it. We have three additional meetings that we will be holding, they're all the next three Mondays, basically. The eleventh will be at Trinity Church there at the bypass, and that Cypress Laker Country Club, one of those two, but that church sits right there.
Cypress Club?
The eighteenth will be at William James School out on eighty, and then the twenty-fifth will be at Lincoln Chapel, I think it's the elementary school. But they're all six to eight, so we just wanted to give that word out for all those folks. Probably, we're looking into live streaming those meetings as well, for folks that can't make it out. So, just wanted to let you guys know that that was going on, and so far, the response has been, you know, positive overall.
Kudos to Chief Grant, and Jason, I was talking about it after the meeting, he did an outstanding job representing the territory. It can be very challenging for anyone to understand, and for those of us that have heard it numerous times, that did an outstanding job. And one thing, that's the greatest takeaway that I got from the meeting was a bunch of different people, whether it be insurance agents, or you all, it's the fire representation, city and county, us, Jack and myself talking afterwards, just everybody committing to understanding and working together for the better of the future. Did you take that away, what was your?
I, I did. I think that it's a, it's a, it's a frustrating, the circumstances that have created this is frustrating all around. And it's not just one individual entity or individual that has, that has, you know, contributed more than any others. You know, ISO, the way that they apply that, that classification, the water system companies, not whether they didn't know or didn't understand what, what their responsibilities were for that, that piece of it. Because again, it was one of those situations of, it's never been a problem in the past, why is it a problem now? And, you know, that's, that's the information we're trying to raise for the community, and build up that, that community understanding, and thereby, hopefully, that community support to do what we need to do, to address the problem, and get what, what we need to do to accomplish those goals, so.
There was, there was a fundamental shift on ISO, yeah, I mean, from distance to access to water. And that is the issue that most people are having, is that some of these private waters, you just don't have either the flow or the connection.
Right, the fundamental, the fundamental issue that is creating this is water, is the access to water.
Yeah.
Now, while the requirements have never changed, it's always been that five miles and a thousand feet within hydrant, the, the local agent or company's ability to have flexibility in the classification they assign is what changed. That got taken away from ISO, so now, instead of the insurance agent being able to come to the fire department and get a letter saying, yes, they're in our five-mile radius, yes, there's a fire hydrant here, we don't know exactly what that fire hydrant will do, but it's there. That wasn't enough to give them that credit. And now, ISO is using technology, and they know it. And, and that's, that's, I think, the biggest piece on ISO's side, is how they are applying the classifications to the individual properties. And that flexibility on the, the actual local side is no more.
Well, and better information on the individual systems itself, yeah, I mean, they have better idea, like, how much flow is coming out of that hydrant now.
Right, and if you don't turn in those, that data, then it's, it's not credible. But the, the way it's credited, the, the requirements for it to stay credited, all those things have, have been the same for, for a number of years, ever since I've been involved with it. It's, it's really the biggest shift that, that I think has created most of it, and this isn't just a local issue, this is across the state. This is, this is happening all over Georgia and Alabama with the guinea pigs for this new technology, and it's, it's been interesting across the state, so.
But the shift is, shift is, is, it isn't anymore just having a pipe. Now, it's, you have the pipe, and you know what that flow is, and you have to, you have to show that that flows, which is really good for the homeowners, because now they know, that when, when we're out there, we're ready to draw the water, we're going to have water.
Well, and the reason I ask this, because it's just, that's just another example of how much more water is becoming the important engine, for whether it's economic development, whether it's fire, whether it's stormwater, whether it's new sewer regulations, E.P.D., it's, I mean, it's just, and so, kudos again to the city staff, they saw this water issue come in months and years ago.
Yeah, I mean, we, yeah, we recognized it two thousand and fifteen, and, you know, I used the example last night. I, I reached out to the water companies that, that we were aware of in the district, on three separate occasions, with letters, formal letters, certified letters, and no response. And I don't think it was in, you know, you know, kind of a, you know, got no interest, go away, I just don't think they understood the impact and their part in it. But they understand now, without a doubt, so, thank you very much.
Hold on, I would like, let me go out and comment. I do miss, I didn't mention the fact that we actually got to see our fire department in action last night, because they had to call during the meeting, and within seconds, the guys were on the trucks and leaving, so that was a pretty cool thing to witness.
Yeah. You, you spurred a little extra motivation than getting out of station and ordering.
Would you like to fire?
No, I worked it on the truck, Tim thought that might be missed.
I think it happened, we all kind of wanted to get out of there.
So, so the final thing is, is either Frank or Jason, we're going to have to have a special meeting February what, for the CDBG? Do we know the date, so these guys can start to plan on their calendar? On the twentieth?
What?
And that's.
It could be a few days past that.
I think proposals are due from consultants and engineers for to administer the CDBG program, or due on the nineteenth, I believe. So, as quickly as we can get through those applications, those R.O.P.s that are submitted, we're trying to get this turned around, because we're up against a pretty hard deadline.
So, probably the next first part of April. It could be the next week, the twenty-sixth, maybe?
Well, the May team is the next meeting.
Well, we want to be to get it on the nineteenth, we don't get it on the nineteenth.
I'd say we're on the twenty-sixth.
Well, we could, we could get it on the twenty-sixth, because that would be a little sort of.
So, we're going to try to do our part as quickly as possible, and get back to you.
As soon as it is.
Thursday morning, Friday morning?
You just got to make sure, you got to make sure it's in there in twenty-four hours.
Okay. So, we just want y'all to know that something's coming up.
All right, are there any public comments? Seeing that there are none, we'll move down to agenda item two, which is consideration of a motion to enter into executive session to discuss personnel matters, real estate, and our potential litigation in accordance with O.C.G.A. fifty-four-two, dash three, D. Is there a motion to enter into executive session? Just a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
I know I saw the trace, sorry about that. I knew you, I knew, I knew it coming out, but the thing last night made me think that if we don't have anything Saturday, I apologize.